Once we hit six fifteen, we are. All right, there we go. It is six fifteen. So we will call this meeting of the Police Commission to Order. First order of business is roll. So I see Jeff Dunn, you are here.
I am.
Roger Perrault, you are here.
Present.
Jeff Madden, you are present as well.
I am.
Okay, very good. I don't believe we have anyone else, certainly no one else that needs to be here.
No one else.
So let's, let's rock and roll with this, this meeting. First order of business, pledge allegiance. Yeah, that is Madden. Please leave this in the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Next order is minutes. As any, would anyone like to approve the minutes? Make a motion?
I make a, Roger, I make a motion. We missed the march of seventeenth P D S presented.
I think it was, yeah, okay. And then there's another, well, okay, seventeenth is presented. Thank you. Is there a second?
You know, I'm not sure if I was present for that entire meeting.
Let me take them. All right, then I will second Jeff to, to make certain that we're on board with that. That said, all in favor indicate by saying, state your name, say aye. Ed Monai.
Roger, aye. And Jeff Lobstein.
Okay, very good. Old business, we have none. Jeff Madden, you're up, my friend. We're going to talk about your supplemental report. So please, please.
Roger that. Does everybody have it or can everybody see it?
I think, yeah, we all have copies as well.
All right. So I'll start off at the top of my supplemental report. So right now, the police department is currently working on many serious cases. Detective Cobble is investigating and/or assisting officers with all these. And this involves our more serious cases that we have stuff at the lab. We have stuff other agencies are working on with us. I don't break them down, but we have a lot of them these days. The total calls for services period was six thousand and forty-nine. That is, it's about average of what our, our month's calls were, call volume is. The emergency nine-one-one calls for this period were two hundred and fifty-seven, and we still maintained a six point zero eight average second or an answer time.
Jeff, if we can go back to number two for just a moment, with, with COVID and everything and restaurants closed down and bars not happening, would you consider that six thousand forty-nine to be high?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
We're still about in line with even our other, our months without COVID.
Okay.
Within a few, probably maybe a few hundred calls, but nothing considerable.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I want to also inform you guys, last week I had two cameras go down at Nystrom's. One needed to be replaced and one was repaired. That was, the job was completed last week. However, I don't have a bill for that yet. So. And also one of my complete dispatch stations for dispatching fire, EMS, and police went down. That's the, all of electronics that is currently uninstalled and was taken to Hamden, their headquarters for utility communications, and they're rebuilding that for me. So. I'm trying to expedite that because right now I don't have a backup system. That was my backup.
Go ahead, Roger.
What causes some like to just go down? Just age?
Age. They told me I received my money's worth out of that computer. They were installed in two thousand thirteen and they run twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. They never get turned off. So he said the, the average is about five or six years. So you got money's worth out of that one.
Okay.
The problem is they don't give any warning. So it just goes and, you know, I can't, can't dispatch anything. So obviously that's why we built the backup system into the original install. So we would have, we won't run into that problem. But now that they took that system out, you know, I'm operating on my backup. So I need that repaired right away.
And the indication as to when it will be repaired and sent back to you yet?
I talked to them on Friday. They said it was still in I T. They were rebuilding it and they, they would hope to have it done yesterday, but they didn't. And I did not get a phone call today. So I'll be touch base with them on tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, we want to get that back in there. Just one other question, I guess, Jeff, is our other, is there other station of similar age?
It's a twin. Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So that one could go anytime. So I'm going to get a, I already told them to give me a quote. Once I get this one back to actually probably repo that one before it just goes on me.
And that might be a damn good idea. I would suggest you do that.
Yeah, I already told, I already gave them a heads up on that and I'll just take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Also during this period, I've had three officers out on W C. One is not expected back till the end of July, and I may get another one back by the end of this month. However, I did speak with that party's doctor, and that doesn't seem like it's going to happen in May, maybe a second week in June. And one officer, I don't know when they're coming back. So also, I have another officer that was injured and not on the job, but he's going out probably the second week of June, and he'll be out for a minimum of ten weeks for recovery on surgery on his back. So I'll have four people out.
That's major.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's major.
Quarter of my workforce.
Yep.
So it's going to be, it's, it's a revolving, same story. I can't get ahead.
Now, every time you get there where we're supposed to be, somebody goes out. It's, it almost seems inevitable.
Exactly. Just when I think I'm coming out of the woods, I get, you know, another, another case or another injury and someone goes out for an extended period of time. It's not like they're going out for days. They're going out for ten weeks, eleven weeks, you know, and it just, not only is it bad for the guys, you know, they're forced to work a lot of overtime, but then, then they have the overtime in and of itself that just crushes my budget. So. Nothing I can do about.
No, in terms of the financial aspect of it all, we all understand, the Board of Finance understands that's, that's the lesser of the two issues.
Yeah.
From my perspective anyways.
I, you know, I hear what you're saying, but it's disheartening. I can never operate with a full staff.
No, it doesn't seem that way, Jeff.
I haven't been able to in over three years since I've taken over. And I did for exactly like three weeks. We had a full staff. Other than that, it's always been. We move on. First fear, not an issue. Just giving you guys a heads up.
Thank you.
Also during this period, I had forty-five A C O calls and Plymouth was needed for five and they did respond. We've had a large amount of bear calls, obviously with the spring. But a lot of dog calls, regular A C O calls, but no issues. That department seems to be running without any flaws. I still don't have a word on that cops grant. I put in for the grant to hire another full-time officer. I still have not been notified whether I received that or not. So I'm just keep you guys in the loop. Once I do get notified, whether it's in a meeting or before a meeting, I'll let you guys know that we dig it approved or not approved.
Jeff, when did you apply?
I think it was probably the week of my last meeting. So over, well over a month ago. And I still.
We did. We haven't met in a while, so it could be even longer. Yeah.
Yeah. I know I mentioned it in one, the minutes of my last meeting, but.
No, it was probably two months ago, Jeff.
Yeah. Well, I wait for them to notify me.
There was no timeline, huh? They never gave any indication?
No.
And you, do you know anything traditionally from past years?
No, only that I do have to wait. I'm at their mercy. I'm sorry, were you talking to me?
I was. And you're, you're answering, you're answering.
All right, all right. I thought I heard somebody, I thought I heard something else in the background.
No.
No, I'm just at their mercy. They, well, I obviously put in for other grants. They just notify you by email. No phone call, no anything. But there was no timeframe in there. They just said I would be notified.
Okay, thank you.
But as of this date, the department has been operating without any officer illness related to COVID. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Numerous precautions were put into place at the department to help eliminate the possibility of contracting this such as with the guys wearing masks, extra cleaning, decon in the cruisers. Every person has to be counted after their shift. There's no one coming into the P D lobby. We're trying to handle walk-ins out in the parking lot. We eliminated fingerprinting with the, the governor put out an order relieving us of that duty. And so we stopped fingerprinting for pistol permits, job applications. So to eliminate traffic inside the P D, we're only fingerprinting criminals. And seems to be working. No one, I'll knock on wood, no one here has gotten sick, and we're going to continue to operate that way, you know, until we see fit not to.
Jeff, I got a question.
Yes.
What, what is it to temporarily incarcerate somebody at the P D? How do you bring him in?
The way we normally do through the Sallyport.
Okay, all right, fine.
We have a guest.
Are they tested in any way, Jeff?
Excuse me?
Are they tested in any way for this COVID?
No, we leave it up. We do have a, we do question them just as, like we question all our callers before we go to somebody's house. And if they pass the test or if they willingly tell us that they have it, and then we take. And/or we make arrangements with the court to get them out of our facility and get them somewhere else where they can be housed so they don't contaminate everybody. Our court system closed in Torrington, so temporarily we've been, we have to deal with G A four now, which is Waterbury. So all our, all our casework and all our reports, all our prisoners, everything has to go to Waterbury for the time being. They, they were scheduled to open G eighteen backup next week. I've been told they're putting that off and will continue to operate out of Waterbury. But there were a couple of bugs in the system when it first started, but it seems to be working okay now.
Okay. We do have, and you probably are aware of this, Jeff, we do have some, what do I want to call them? Thermal?
Thermometers?
Yeah, yes. On order from the state, so you'll be getting one and that'll at least be able to give you an opportunity. Should you find somebody who comes in, you can take their temp and see if it's a concern. Now, I don't know what the heck you do with them at that point in time, you know? You still gotta, you still gotta take care of it, but I guess you could at least isolate it and know you may have to decontaminate that area, which you probably do anyways already. So.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But at least you'll have a heads up, you know?
Do you know when those are coming in?
Better concern. Pardon?
Do you know when those are coming in?
No, I do not.
Okay.
No, I do not. We put them on order. So. That's all I can say on that.
Okay. Thank you. And at the page two, all three of my budgets, police communication and A C O, with, with the obvious exception of my overtime lines are right where they're supposed to be for this time of the fiscal year. And. Other than that, I'll go to topics for discussion. That's probably the end of my, that is the end of my report.
Yeah.
Any, any questions before I continue about the report?
Yeah, I have one, Jeff.
Yep.
My usual thing is if those slowdown signs at the school. You know, the yellow signs that flash in the morning or in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah.
They're still, they're still operating. School's not even going to open until September.
Yeah. They're screwed up. I'll have Glenn take a look at it in, in the morning and see if he can pull the plug on them or what, but.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And one, one other thing.
Yep.
Apparently in the past, we have gone to executive session because there's a need to do that. How can we do that with zooming like this in the future if you need to have a meeting?
We can. We've done it several times with P and Z.
All right, explain it, Stacy, please.
Basically, I am in charge of the recording so, and the live stream onto YouTube. So if motion is made to go into executive session, then I stop the recording and I turn off the live stream. And if anybody, if anybody is in the meeting, we explain we're going into executive session and they need to leave. And in one meeting's case, two people wouldn't leave. So I was able to politely let them know that they were about to be ejected.
Okay, good. Thank you, Stacy.
No problem.
Stacy, if someone goes in, if we go into executive session, you ask people to leave, how would they know that we come out of executive session to rejoin the meeting?
We can let them know. Traditionally, we do it at the, for P and Z at least, and really for wetlands, we do it at the very end of the meeting. So the only last thing that's happening after that is a vote to adjourn and then we're done. So most people just know that for all intents and purposes, for them, the meeting is done.
And that's what we've traditionally done too, Jeff. When we've had an executive session, I always put it at the end of the meetings of our Board of Selectmen. So it's not to, you know, cause the interruption and have to ask somebody to leave, wait outside in the hallway while they come back in after the fact, you know, as long as we're not making any decisions when we come out of executive session, there's really nothing to, you know, there's nothing more. So we're not excluding anybody from anything. And should we do, and should we by chance have to make a decision in open meeting after an executive session, then it would be, it would be on the record. So, you know, at least we would be transparent is what I'm trying to say. Jeff, unless, anybody have any further questions for Jeff before, before he goes into topics for discussion?
Well, when we can add the topic of discussion, I have a question when we get there. So not right now.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff. Madden.
Okay. Topics for discussion, current road projects. I just want to know for the department wise, where we stand with the Hickory Hill project and Woodbridge Lane and Ridgewood Acres. And then I know the downtown area is getting some roads to be done. Have all those gone out to bid and have we secured contractors to do those jobs or when are they starting?
So I'll bring you up to speed on what I know and what I can tell you.
Okay.
The Rhodes project should be kicking off at any time. I can't tell you the exact date. Glenn Clark can certainly give you that. But that should, I would say, I would not be surprised if that doesn't start going next week after Memorial Day.
Okay.
The Woodbridge and Ridgewood acre one, I just signed a contract with today and I'm awaiting his construction schedule. So I don't have a timeframe on that yet, but he seemed anxious to get going on that within the next couple of weeks. Regarding Kickery Hill, which is really the big one for you, Jeff, in P D, because that's where you're going to need officers for traffic control. The others are going to be, I expect are going to be handled by Glenn's crew, unless he tells you otherwise.
Sure.
I still don't have a go on that. It's in its final stages. We are waiting for a letter from D O T, a letter which will indicate to us that we can now advertise the project. So, and once it's advertised, we have about a month wait on that because of the complexity of the job to give contractors an opportunity to go through it all and come in with a good bid. So. And any construction there in my mind is not going to begin before sometime in July.
Okay.
You know, and, and then again, it'll be, what's the contractor want to do? How far is he going to go? I, I don't know. That'll be a discussion we'll have to have at that point.
Okay.
That's still a little bit down the road.
But it is going to get started this year.
I expect it will, Jeff, because we're putting it out to bid minimally. You know what it may end up being again. We'll have to find out what the contractor's mindset is on it. Hard for me to say.
Okay.
Certainly I expect what would happen is, is they'll go in, they'll do some, because there's areas where they're going to have to go into off, off road, off the current road, right? To, for some, for various reasons. So I fully expect they'll be taking down some trees, doing that kind of thing, maybe even getting some, a little bit of site work done. Hard for me to say, really, until we get a contractor and discuss with them what specifically they want to do. So even if they got guys out there taking down trees along the sides of roads, you're still going to need somebody out there to help them with that because they got some large trees that are going to have to come down, you know? I expect some activity. I just don't know to what degree. We won't know until we have a contractor.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And brings me to parking on Main Street. So as a commission, we ought to start thinking about, well, in conjunction probably with the E D C and the commission and the selectmen should think about what we want to do now that the meters are down. What kind of parking do we want to establish out on Main Street? So.
Jeff, Roger, kind of question. The old meter is physically taken down now?
Yes. Yeah, they're gone.
Okay, the post, everything?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great.
And I will say, it is definitely a marked improvement on Main Street, just having them.
Absolutely. I agree here, Jeff. Absolutely.
Jeff, Jeff Dunn, that is. Do you have any feedback from the downtown merchants as to what they might like to see there? Do you have any input on that? Or is that going to be a topic for E D C discussion tomorrow night?
Yeah, I have a little bit, but you know, shortly after Jeff took these meters down, we went into COVID mode and I haven't been able to call people together. I have, you know, spoken individually to people and they're like, yeah, it's a good, it's a nice improvement. And what are we doing? What's the next step? So, you know?
Right.
Figured those out. So determining what the parking spaces should be and maybe getting some lines painted or, you know, whatever, there's some curves painted, whatever the case may be, some better signage. So.
Sure, but so is that, I guess, and I know this was Jeff Madden's question too, because he and I have talked about this a little bit. Is it your intent to at least query those folks as we move forward here? Because we would, that's what we're looking for, some input, you know, from the business merchants in that area as to what they might think would be appropriate for signage. We don't want to go, in other words, we don't want to just proceed and say, okay, thirty-minute parking, when they think that might be too long or, or too little for that matter, you know? We want to get something that seems to be suitable. I know one of the complaints has always been, and I'm sure you'll confirm this, probably some of you, most of you can, is, is that what happens is, is that customer bases don't get to use it because some of the business employees dominate that space or tenants in some of the buildings instead of utilizing the parking area that they have. So I would have to say that part of the objective is going to be is let's figure out what that balance is so that we can best utilize the limited amount of parking we have.
Yeah. So one thing I did want to let you know, I was going to do in the selectman theme, but I'll do it here. Because Black Rock Tavern is looking to do outdoor dining and working on paving and doing various things.
Right.
Red reached out to me to see if we might be able to get some cooperation with Adams. And I reached out to the corporate office and they gladly said they would be happy to cooperate and open up the gate between the two lots and all of them use of it.
Nice.
We'll be providing some insurance to them and whatnot. So it's kind of like one little step forward on cooperation between landlords down there. And I suspect that will help Red quite a bit. And I'm going to talk to Dave Lamanna and others too, to see if there's any other ideas about doing anything outdoors during this time. So that maybe we can share.
Sure, good. Thanks. That'd be great. So let me just ask the question then. In, with, with Adams providing some additional parking and opening the gate, because that was a problem at one time, and I'm sure you remember that. Is it going to be, is, or is an area going to be designated more specifically so that it's like, here's where you can park if you're going to Black Rock, don't park there?
Yeah, we, we had very quick conversations via email. So details really haven't been worked out yet. I should stress that this, I requested temporary access during this COVID time. But I did also say I'd like to talk to, talk to Adams and others when things get a little bit more normal about additional efforts.
Yep, that, that would be, well, no need to say. That would be great if that, if that can be pulled off. No question. Honestly, and I'm not criticizing or, or it's, you know, because it's clearly their property and it's their decision. But no matter how busy Adams gets, it's rare that that area to the extreme over by the basketball courts and so on is utilized by their customers. I think their biggest gripe was some time ago is that people were taking some of their prime parking areas right in the front and then walking around into the restaurant on Main Street, you know? And that, that was, I understood it back a few years ago. So that's why I say if there could be a designated parking area and Red could make it well-known to his customer base that there is an area there, use that, that only, it would go a long way towards a, a good relationship.
Yep.
Anything else?
I, I got.
Well, if I could ask just one other thing to you, Jeff, just to get your opinion on this. With Black Rock Tavern doing this dining area out and back, and I guess they're paving it new, so it'll be nice and clean and whatnot. And they're putting up some sort of barrier between the dining area and the driveway. Is there any thoughts as to what would, if, if they were to decide to close that alleyway for the time being and just have the traffic all exit down by Reeves Field? Would that make any sense? Would there be any legalities around that?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either. Wouldn't that be a private drive belonging to someone there? I'm, I'm not sure who. That would, I guess, be the question at hand. Does it belong to, whose building does it belong to? Is it a shared one?
It's a right of way, I believe, between.
Yeah. It is a right of way, but someone asked, someone asked some sort of control of that and not, not the town.
Yeah.
When we went, if I may, when we went out to inspect the building official, the Torrington area, me, when we went out, I spoke with Jane from Black Rock, and she said that it was, it was a shared driveway. That she has to, that she's obligated to share with the building next door.
Which is Lamanna's building.
Yes. And I, I could certainly reach out to him too. I just, I was thinking, you know, it's, it would be a, a test for, you know, if we were to ever redesign and eliminate, you know, that alleyway in the middle, it might, you know, give you an idea of how that might work. But at, at this point, if you have people dining out and back, it really could be a little bit more of a safety and certainly a comfort issue. Five cars coming in and out of there. So I, I'll pursue that. If, if there's no legal reason why, you know, police wise or anything that why we would, wouldn't do that, I cannot discuss it with them.
No. And it doesn't make sense to, for me to keep the traffic away from the diners. So, you know, if, if nobody had a problem with it, I mean, I certainly wouldn't. It's definitely a big safety issue.
Yeah.
Even with Jersey, even with Jersey barriers there, it's a safety issue, but I would rather not see traffic going in and out of that alley while there's people sitting there eating.
I think.
I'll reach out to Dave tomorrow and ask, ask him about that. I'll reach out to Dave tomorrow and ask, ask him about that. I, I suspect he might be willing. And again, you know, this is all special COVID situation, so we can test this all out. And if it doesn't work, we go back to normal when it's all over, so.
Right. There you go. There you go. Yeah.
Our fire chief.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, we should, we would check with him as well to make sure.
Yes.
It's not a concern for him, although I don't think it would be, because I can't imagine I could possibly get a fire apparatus down that alleyway, you know? But just to say, we, we should check with them to make sure.
Probably get in there. It's a combat to fire.
Yeah, yeah. Well, in, in that case, look, if we only have, let's say, sawhorses there, you know, they, they just move them. It's not an issue.
Well, that, start with Jim O'Neil first.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I had, I had similar thought.
Follow up with him as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further regarding this report?
Roger makes the motion, we adjourn.
Okay, I got a motion. Jeff?
Jeff will second that.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Ed Monai.
Roger, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned at six forty-six PM. Thank you.
Do we sign out of this?
For those of you, know that, know that you gotta leave this meeting and to attend the next meeting, it's a separate, it's a separate item, so to speak. So you gotta go to that agenda, click on it to get in for the next meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. See you all then.
See you in a few.
See you in a few.
Okay, take care, guys. In a few minutes, we'll see you again. Bye-bye.